Excuse me, everyone. We call environmental, excuse me, environmental planning meeting for April 2nd to order. It is 7:03. May I please have one of my distinguished commissioners lead us into the pledge of allegiance? Could we all stand, please? That is right, it is. He said play ball, it is baseball season. Alrighty, so may we have roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Reitzschur.
Present.
Commissioner Khan.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sherman.
Present.
Vice Chair Langley.
Present.
And Chair Henderson.
Present. Alright, item number four, there's no minutes for, oh yeah, that is correct. So, we have elections for Chair and Vice Chair. Are there any nominations?
I move that we elect you, Daryl Henderson, as Chairman of this committee.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
Commissioner Reitzschur.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman. And Chair Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Now, may we have a motion for Vice Chair?
I make a motion that we elect Ronald Reitzschur as the Vice Chair of this committee.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Certainly, Vice Chair Langley.
Yes.
Chair Henderson.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
And Commissioner Reitzschur.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Welcome, sir. Alright, excuse me, now we're moving on to item number four was approval of minutes, which we had no minutes from last meeting. So, item five, oral communication.
At this time, if there were members of the public who wish to speak to the Planning Commissioner for items not on this agenda, then you have three minutes to speak to the Planning Commissioners. At this moment, I haven't received any sort of public comments from the public who wish to speak to the Planning Commission for items not on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Okay, other matters, we go to 6A Environmental Impact Report. So, for the general plan 3-21, zone change 4-21.
Chairman, before we go forward, I believe there are two Commissioners who have a statement to make.
Disclosures, please.
At this time, I would have to recuse myself.
Yeah, and I'm sorry you need to state the reason why.
Because I live within the boundaries of this plan.
The 500.
The 500 feet.
Radius, so you have a conflict of interest, thank you.
And I, I refuse myself because I live within 500 feet of the project.
Okay, gentlemen, if you can step down and you can remain in the audience or sit in the back.
Okay, back to the order, excuse me, 6A Environmental Impact Report, general plan amendment 3-21, zone change 4-21, zone text 6-21, specific plan 1-21, site plan review 11-21, vesting tentative map, vesting tentative map 4-21, development and agreement of affordable housing with the Normandy Crossing Plan.
Good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the Commission. So, tonight, under Agenda Item Number 6A, we're bringing back for the resolutions that the Commission directed the staff to bring forward for consideration. As Chair Henderson mentioned, this is for the Normandy Crossing Project unofficially at 16911 Normandy Avenue. What's being asked of the Commission is to formally vote on the resolutions that were requested at the March 19th Planning Commission Meeting. Just to remind you, the first resolution that you asked staff to bring before you was a recommendation to the City Council to certify the environmental impact report that was prepared for the project. So, that's shown here under Resolution Number PC 4-24. The second resolution the Commission asked the staff to bring forward was for a resolution to record the vote on amending the, a recommendation on amending the land use designation for the project's site within the city's general plan. Again, that was from a 2-1 vote, but that did not constitute a passing from the Council, but that will have to be recorded. So, Resolution Number 5-24 is being brought before you for your consideration. And lastly, the Council, sorry, the Commission asked staff to bring forward a resolution recommending to the City Council that the project entirely, the remaining project entitlements be denied by the Council again for the specific plan project. So, that is what's being brought before you for your consideration tonight.
Chair, I just wanted to kind of sum up what Amanda just said. So, the decisions that were made at the last meeting were made. The three of you decided on denying the approval of the Normandy Project. What is happening tonight, and just clarification to the community out there, is you're ratifying what your decision was already made during the public hearing. This is not a public hearing item. The hearing was held, the hearing was closed, the decision was made based on these three items. I think the one that's most important that the audience is wanting to be here for is whether or not the denied, the project was denied, a recommendation to the City Council. And so, I just want to make it clear to the audience that the decision was made and they're just ratifying it by a formal process through a resolution. So, that's what's coming before them tonight.
By ratifying, it means they're gonna, what Greg Director Sujiuchi just said, they're taking formal action to confirm the direction that was given at the Planning Commission at the last meeting. The resolution is the formal recordation of their votes, which moves it, moves the project eventually will go to the City Council in one form or another.
We, at this time, we do have, while this isn't a public hearing, we do have, any member of the public can't speak on an item before the agenda, or on the agenda before the Planning Commission. We did receive two speaker cards for those men, and so, we'll call those individuals at this time if the Planning Commission wishes to.
Yes, well, excuse me, so, understand what the proceedings again is, is we're just here to talk about the resolutions. We all know that the project has been denied as being able to go to City Council. So, if you're here to speak about the resolutions, then that's what we're really here to do. To talk about, you know, the project again, it'll come, this project will have to come forth to City Council. So, if we can just stick to what our agenda plan is, we'll be talking about the resolution, and then we'll give three minutes for any speaker for that. So, at this time, I'll open up the public hearing, so you can...
Can I have Fred Schaefer come to the podium?
Fred Schaefer, representing the applicant, just want to make a very brief statement that while we believe that the project we proposed is a project that is a net benefit to the community and would raise property values in the neighborhood, we nonetheless hear very clearly what the concerns and sentiments of the community in the neighborhood around the property are. And we are, as of now, not planning to move forward to City Council with the project as proposed, but rather seeking to engage with planning staff and with members of the community and Planning Commission to talk about how we can potentially alter or modify the project to come up with something that is a perceived to be a win-win for all.
Thank you.
I misspoke, we, at this time, have a total of eight speakers on them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have George Salvador come to the podium? And just as a reminder, we have three minutes for each person to speak on the resolution for this item.
Good evening, Commission. My name's Salvador George, and I'm a member of the Western States Regional Council of Carpenters. I live in the area and work and recreate in the vicinity of the project. I believe that I will be impacted by the environmental impacts of the project. The city should require this project to be built with contractors that will hire locally, pay prevailing wage, and utilize apprentices from the state-certified apprenticeship training program. Workforce requirements reduces construction-related environmental impacts while benefiting the local economy and workforce development. In a recent 2020 report titled "Putting California on the High Road: A Jobs and Climate Action Plan for 2030," a California Workforce Development Board concluded that investments in growing, diversifying, and upscaling California workforce can positively affect returns on climate mitigation efforts. The South Coast Air Quality Management District recently found that local hire requirements can result in air pollutant reductions. Recently, the state of California reiterated its commitment towards encouraging workforce development and housing affordability through the Affordable Housing and High Roads Jobs Act of 2022, otherwise known as Assembly Bill Number 2011, which requires projects pay workers a prevailing wage and hire from state-certified apprenticeship programs for projects being certain sightings, affordability, and development standards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Can I have Brian Smith come to the podium?
Good evening, Planning Commission. I just wanted to speak, I guess technically, against Resolution Number 6-24, your denial of this project. I just wanted to say, I'm not going to change your mind, obviously, tonight here, but just some of the things that we have heard discussed, you know, I think it's just very important to reiterate, if we cut this down by two more floors, I don't think we're going to see the end of opposition, and I think we're going to continue to have it cut down and have it cut down until nothing happens. The fact of the matter is, if we don't build here and in every other somewhere else that we also have been requested to be built upon, we're not going to meet our, you know, minimum housing allowances, and then we're going to get a seven-floor apartment on this lot anyway by builder's remedy. You know, I'd rather see some measure of single-family homes and, or, you know, town homes for what it's worth, you know, and apartments and everything here, instead of, obviously, even more dense housing that could come as a result of a builder's remedy project. You know, it's not going to solve the housing crisis itself. Obviously, I put in my comments in the final EIR, you know, me saving a hundred bucks is not going to fix my retirement this month. You know, 400 units, this project is not going to change it. But, tell you what will change it, is not building 403 units at every single lot that we need to have built housing. You know, and as, just last for the concern about traffic, you know, it sounds like it's a legitimate issue right now. You know, people are having through traffic on their streets, you know, I don't want to have through traffic on my street, and I'm sure they don't either. That's something that I think the Planning Commission really should focus on, you know, right now and instruct the city to, you know, build some kind of traffic calming that disincentivizes people from traveling through there right now as the, as the street's built. You know, we heard about people taking hard turns, hard-fast turns on the street to the south here. You know, that corner looks like it's built to be very fast, and it doesn't need to be very fast, it's residential area. So, just decoupling these two things, right? A lot of the suspicion about traffic, obviously, is warranted, but I think it's a problem now that can also be fixed. So, thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
May I have John Hidrow come to the podium?
Hello, my name is John Hidrow. I want to thank the Planning Commission for this opportunity to speak today. I've lived over 20 years here in Gardena on 169th Place with the cul-de-sac. I saw the new construction with a three-story building go up outside our cul-de-sac, and I've talked to the woman whose backyard is up against it, and she says it's changed her life for the worst. And I have to agree, looking out my second-story window at this three-story structure, looks terrible to me. I'm not against new construction, I just think that at that type of height, it's in the wrong place. I also wanted to say that I walk the alley just north of Normandy, and I see the backyards where all the single homes are at, and they're going to have three years of construction. There's utility poles, I know they have to put in new sewer, new water, new utilities, new, the garbage and trash that goes through there, everybody's going to have to change and put up with something different for three years. You know, it just seems like it's not for the benefit that, for all, and there should have to be a different way that they can, they can handle this. I'm, I just have to say that it's out of place in that area. And I want to say the last thing is that I see that it's all going to be electric, electric everything, electric cars, electric, you know, that you can recharge your cars. Well, unfortunately, right now, in the last four or five years, I've heard nothing from Kia and Hyundai saying, "Don't park your car in your garage because it can catch on fire." And that's not just for me, this is on the newses, and it's also warning bulletins that they don't have right now the people to fix these problems, and they don't have the parts to fix them, so they're warning people to not park in their garage. That's 400 more cars parking somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
May I have Carrie Ishitani come to the podium?
I didn't have a planned speech last time, I was just so upset, listening to your plan. That traffic, I didn't get to finish, that would come out of that area right across the street from my garage, has to go somewhere else, and it's going to go into the neighborhood back around the same place that everyone else has to leave. And anyways, that turn that they would have to make is a blind turn up a slanted kind of a road, so, and there's two telephone poles on that one little tiny property, so I don't know how they're going to get all those cars going west to get out, and then you have that turn right there. And plus, I've never in my life seen anyone park on a corner, but in our neighborhood, everyone parks on a corner because there's no parking. So, I don't know what you're going to do with all these cars. I've met somebody that lives at that cocoon, and they don't, they don't park in there because it costs them $1,000 a month to park there, so they park on the street. So, you got to think, where are they going to go? Low-income housing, they're not going to want to pay for parking, they're going to go on the street. I really didn't have anything prepared, I just, you know, I was just saying, trying to continue about what was going on in that street, that's all. And that corner that I live on doesn't have a stop sign, so people are going this way where these cars will come out and have to pass the house that's kind of sticking out already to even make that turn to the street. So, whether you can even see what I'm talking about, is it's a blind turn coming, I guess, south and then going west. So, it's a lot of problems, and that's the only reason, and that's going right directly behind my garage, and that's where they'd have to clear it with the car parked right there. It's very difficult, you personally probably have to go there and do it. I don't even think two cars can pass at the same time on a turn, you know? So, maybe you ought to reexamine the traffic part of it.
Thank you.
May I have Jean Nakano come to the podium?
Hi, good evening. My name is Jeanie Nakano, and I live on 1411 West 172nd Street, near the massive project that is going, I, see, I don't understand, was it declined and we don't have to say anything anymore?
Yes, we, excuse me, we voted no on the project, so now what we're just talking about is the resolutions of what's on the screen, so. So, if it was something to continue about the project, is right now the project has been denied to be sent to City Council.
So, it can be alive?
Well, it could be alive if City Council reviews it and sits and says yes.
And you're the City Council?
No, we're the, we're the Planning Commission.
Oh, okay, well, I guess I just want to say that our community here is totally against it. They say that it's for the community, but this project is just about putting money into someone else's pocket. Because I live on 169th, close to that project, it's very peaceful, most of the people that live there came in 1959 when it was, when it was made, okay, those houses were made. We're elders, I was born in 1948, I'm an elder, I'm 76 years old, and most of us in that community are, we feel safe, we feel comfortable, but I know that if they put that project up there, it's just a massive monster that looks like a penitentiary, it's not even beautiful, it's an eyesore to our community, it's not for our community. That's a joke when you say it's for our community. Our community needs to be rejuvenated, yes, rejuvenated. If you look on the streets on Gardena, can't we put more into that? Can't we put more into Western Avenue? Can't we revitalize the city? We don't need to degenerate it by doing something, I can't believe it, I know I'm going to look up there and see seven stories and possibly 1,000 people, because the way they explained how many people could live there, 1,000 people could occupy that massive building. It's just going to ruin our lives. And like I said, I don't think it's for our community, and it's not helping us, and that someone has very little regard for the people who live, work, and we hope to die there. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Chairman, I just want to reiterate, in case anybody missed it, that the developer, the applicant spoke first and indicated, "This project in its current configuration will not go forward to the City Council." So, the Planning Commission still needs to memorialize its vote from the last time, but it sounds like in its current configuration, this won't happen no matter what. And the developer can speak up if I just misrepresented that.
Okay, can I have Corey Shiozaki come to the podium?
Good evening, and thanks to the Planning Commission for allowing residents in the community to come forward, and I was present at the last Commission Meeting on March 19th, and I had an opportunity to speak, and I appreciate that you heard the voices of the community in denying, you know, the acceptance of this project to go forward. I think it's important, what people have already mentioned earlier, I mean, I'm not in, and I'm in favor of job opportunities and for the community, you know, that's everyone's, you know, right of pursuit, their futures to be employed, but just like others who had mentioned, who live nearer this community, having this project go forward would be not beneficial. I mean, the net good of it will be, have a reversed effect, but I just, again, just want to say, I appreciate the Commission, you know, and the Commissioners for listening to the voices of the community that really does not want this project, you know, this is not the location, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have Hideki Obayashi come to the podium?
City Council members, I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. My son Gavin lives in a similar-type condo not too far from here, and last year, as he was charging his Kia EV in the basement where the garage is, a fire broke out, and the fault was with the, with the condo owner, it wasn't, it wasn't the car side, it was the, the, it was the AC being provided that sparked a flame, and it burned his car, he lived in an apartment right above, it burned it out, he had to live with his mother, my ex-wife, for three months. I travel that alley every day on my way to work at the Gardena Bowl, and, which I co-host with my brother-in-law, we've been there for almost a quarter of a century. I use that alley daily, and like the gentleman said before, it's a huge, tall wall, I mean, I can just imagine it going seven stories. In addition to all the pollution and garbage, it's just too high, too dense, and as the, as the former person said, I know very well that street he was referring to, it's like a right-angle turn, you cannot make it safely, not even one car turning left or right, heaven forbid, two of them. It's just too dangerous and too dangerous. It's just too dangerous and too dangerous. I mean, too dangerous. I'm thankful, I will be thankful if this project is denied. It, it needs to be built somewhere, uh, somewhere else where there's more room and it's safer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And last comment will be from Tish McCully.
Hi, my name is Tish McCully. I wanna thank the planning commission and the developer for hearing from everybody here and, uh, making the decisions that you've made. What I'd like to suggest, and I just wanna reiterate what I'm hearing, is that the, um, the area that's being planned is in a very, uh, single-family neighborhood. It, going forward, I hope it is not zoned for high density. I, I'm not really clear on how the zoning is working. But I know we need 5,000-plus units in Gardena. But there, there are a lot of places in Gardena that are not single-family neighborhoods, very quiet, very established neighborhoods where maybe would be better suited. And, and I've seen some of the plans on the website that seem to be good fits for the area where they are, the Artesia one in particular. But, um, for the revised plan, um, I wanted to ask on everybody's behalf, uh, two things. Will we need to resubmit to be notified of any revised plans? Or is, will staff keep a list of interested parties that have already been, uh, established? And, um, secondly, will that same list of people be notified when this subject is on the agenda for the city council meeting? Thank you.
So I can address those questions from the public? So, um, yes, the, those who have provided their contact information and who have been notified about the previous, uh, meetings for this project going before a public hearing will also be notified, moving forward at the, for any future public hearings before the city council.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
If you haven't already submitted your name, address, then you can go ahead and do so tonight.
So at this time, we'll close the public hearing. And then, there was no public hearing, so then we'll just, uh, make formal resolutions.
No, you have to now take your votes on each of the resolutions one by one. So, motion, second vote.
Excuse me. So, uh, resolution four dash 24, uh, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to adopt resolution number four dash 24, recommending the city council certify an environment impact report for the Normandy Crossing specific plan project located at 16829, 16835 and 16907 South Normandy Avenue. And then use, and zoning changes for the 1.11 acre property located at 16964 Brighton Avenue and the 1.43 acre property located to the east of the project site.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sherman. Uh, motion passes three zero.
Okay, uh, resolution five dash 24, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to adopt resolution number five dash 24, recording the vote of planning commission on amending the land use plan of the City of Gardena general plan by changing the land use designation of the 5.25 acres property located at 16929, 16835, 35 and 16907 South Normandy Avenue to specific plan changing the land use designation of the 1.11 acre property located at 16964 Brighton Avenue to single-family residence, residential, changing the land use designation of the 1.43 acre property located at the eastern edge of the specific plan area.
We're good. I'll second.
To public, to public or institutional and making minor test changes primarily related to specific plan, uh, recommending that the city council take this vote into consideration.
I'll second. Roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Chair Henderson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
And last resolution six dash 24, is there a motion? Motion to adopt? So motion to, uh, recommending the city council approve the...
The recommending the city council deny?
Deny, excuse me, excuse me, deny, excuse me. I'm sorry, sorry, folks. Sorry. I know your blood pressure went up as I sat there. I did a little bit too. So I apologize, sir, and I apologize to you. So resolution six dash 24 recommending the city council deny approvals for the Normandy Crossing project consistent with amendments of the Gardena Municipal Zoning Map adopting the Normandy Crossing specific plan, including the site plan contained therein investing tentative track map, development agreement, affordable housing, and recommend the city council deny the rezoning, uh, of the, the 1.0.11 acres located at 16964 Brighton Avenue, rezoning the 1.64 acres properly located at the eastern edge of the specific plan. Uh, roll call, please. Oh, no, we had a second.
I need a second.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Uh, Chair Henderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
And Commissioner Sherman?
Yes.
Motion passes three zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
We're gonna take a one-minute break to let people leave and then bring back the council members.
Yes. You ready? You ready?
So your, your media's in recess.
Okay.
That's, that's a lie.
It will go once we go. All right, we'll come, we'll come back to order. Okay, we'll back, uh, call media back to order. It is 7:45. So, move it on to public, uh, item 7A, Zone Text Amendment, uh, three dash 24. No, no, sorry. Am I, yeah, it is, sorry. So resolution PC 7 dash 24 recommending city council adopt ordinance, uh, 1871 to amend chapter five dash 52 and title 18 of Gardena Municipal relating to significant tobacco retailers, cigar lounges, and hookah lounges and making, and making a finding in the ordinance exempt from CEQA, pursuant to CEQA guidelines.
Uh, good evening, uh, Chair Henderson and members of the planning commission. I'll be providing a, a presentation in regards to the staff report that was prepared for this item. Um, as, as mentioned, this item is for a recommendation to the city council on the drafted, uh, ordinance number 1871 in relation to amending, um, title five and title 18 as it relates to tobacco retailers, cigar lounges, and hookah lounges and similar uses. Uh, to begin, uh, the, just to provide the commission and, uh, members of the public some context on how we came about to the ordinance drafted here today. Um, back in February of last year, the city council, um, had a directive to staff, uh, to the community development department to look into either regulating or prohibiting significant tobacco retailers due to the proliferation of, of these types of businesses within the city. Uh, at the March 14th meeting, staff received the further direction to prepare a moratorium prohibiting any new, uh, significant tobacco retailer businesses from establishing within the city. Uh, later, the council adopted, uh, another more, uh, urgency ordinance for the moratorium, uh, and that was extended out to March 27th of this year. At the last plan, at the last city council, uh, meeting, the, the city council held a, a study session where at that time it was considered what type of ordinance, uh, a permanent ordinance, um, that should be established to amend the code on, on these types of uses. And so we're, we're bringing that back. Um, and so I'll go over what the ordinance, uh, states. So again, ordinance number 1871 establishes regulations for cigar lounges, hookah lounges, and, uh, significant tobacco retailers. Um, previously, the, the city's ordinance, or sorry, city zoning code did not have, um, definitions to these types of uses. Um, so it was, it was silent on how to regulate these, these uses. Um, so, but then the ordinance, uh, would establish the, the definitions for each of these types of lounges now. And, you know, you've hearing that the ordinance is in reference to significant tobacco retailers. Well, what is a, what is a significant tobacco retailer? Uh, the, the city's ordinance has already established this definition. Uh, the, the, this ordinance would just rearrange the, where the definition is. Because as, as mentioned, while these types of uses were silent in the city zoning code, um, the city's title fi- title five, the business code, um, did establish certain regulations for permits, uh, for any type of tobacco retailer. And within that chap, or within that title, significant tobacco retailers were stated to be any tobacco retailer for which the, the principal core of the business is selling tobacco products. Um, so it, and it provides a degree of it. So 20% or more of the floor area, the display area, is devoted to tobacco products. Um, and, or, and/or, yeah, or both. 67% of the gro- uh, or more of the gross sales receipts for the, for the establishment comes directly from selling tobacco products. Or 50% or more of the completed sales of transactions. So again, this is, uh, where the tobacco is the primary, uh, part of the business. Not where it's ancillary, where they, yeah, where it's less than these percentages. So at the, at the city council meeting, uh, the, the council directed staff to draft an ordinance to, um, to permanently prohibit significant retail, significant tobacco retailers within the city. So it, it's listed within all the existing commer- the, the ordinance is drafted to list, uh, significant tobacco retailers as a prohibited use within all zoning districts, uh, within the commercial and the residential, sorry, within the commercial and industrial uses. And as not a listed use under the residential, it'll also be prohibited. Uh, however, at that time, the council did direct staff to distinguish that significant tobacco retail uses are not to include cigar, uh, or hookah lounges, as those fall under a different category. Again, sign- Again, silent within the code at this time, but would establish definitions under this ordinance. And staff has drafted the ordinance to allow for these types of uses in the following zoning districts. I'll go over each M U O, which is the mixed-use overlay that allows for both residential and commercial uses. The A M U, the Artesia mixed-use, this is a newer establishment that it was re, re-adopted where the, the area along the south end of Artesia, where Rascals is at, and the town home developments. So, that's a mixed-use development area as well with commercial and residential. The C R zone is the city's commercial residential zoning district, and that's the unofficial downtown Gardena area. C P is a commercial professional zone, and the C two and the C three are the city's commercial, neighborhood commercial zones. Under the draft ordinance, city is, the staff has drafted to, to recommend that the hookah lounges and cigar lounges be permitted through a conditional use permit under the M one and M two zoning districts as well. Sorry if I didn't make that clear at first. These are where the zones where the ordinance is suggested to be allowed, for cigar and hookah lounges to be allowed through a conditional use permit process. So, again, that would be a process that would be brought to the commission for consideration. So, as, similar to other uses that are listed in the city's zoning code, there, there are specific provisions, those standards, that those uses are, that the city's code calls out, and that those specific establishments would be subject to, if approved, for a conditional use permit. Staff has, has researched other languages within other cities' codes on what type of requirements that they have for, for these types of businesses. And so, these are the, the specific conditions that the, that the staff has drafted within the ordinance. I won't go over it all, but they include prohibiting anyone under the age of twenty-one within the premise, to not allow anybody that would, is obviously intoxicated or under the influence, and, and having no display or advertisements of tobacco products that are visible from the front of the business. So, these would be set standards within the city's municipal code, but again, these are, these uses would be subject to a conditional use permit. So, they, again, the, the commission would also have the, through that process, the right to add in any conditions that they see fit for, for those uses when they come before you. And, and that, that's the, the end of the, the presentation in regards to the ordinance, right? And put in the, the resolution number here. But, again, this planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the city council on this ordinance under resolution number PC seven dash twenty-four. I'll go back to that. So, at this time, staff is available for any questions on this matter. We do have one public comment that was received and provided to the, to the commission and is made part of the record. And, and I believe there is one speaker, there's one speaker card we have submitted already for this item. This is a public hearing item, so the, the planning commission is being asked to open the public hearing, receive testimony, and, and vote on PC number seven dash twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? I have one. So, currently, right now, all of the, let's say, smoke shops is currently being reviewed and approved by PD, correct?
So, the community development department processes the request for a tobacco retail permit. That, through that process, it is reviewed through the police department.
So, now, they would come with the, with the, with the C U P, they would come through us, no?
The ordinance will prohibit any new tobacco retailer, or significant tobacco retailer, so your tobacco shops and, or the, the primary business is selling tobacco products as directed by the council. This resolu, this ordinance would prohibit those uses throughout the city. So, any new ones being established at the city.
Right, correct, correct. Any questions? You know, no? Okay, well, then I'll open the public hearing.
Okay, may I have Mike Yino-Senio come to the podium? And just as a reminder, you have three minutes to speak to the planning commission.
Cheapest Smokes. Just want to make this kind of quick. We do understand the concerns of the council and commission in regards to what a significant tobacco retailer, their influence is on the community. Us as a brand-new store, we would like to say we have addressed the different things and have implemented age verification, twenty-one and over carding system in our store to make sure that we're not influencing the youth of Gardena. So, we're looking to be able to operate as a significant tobacco retailer. We would love to be able to have more than twenty percent of our tobacco products in our store, just to be able to have variety and selection to the community. So... We just want to be able to be a young business. We're basically a couple of young guys from the South Bay area, and we want to have a positive influence just as young businessmen with a smoke shop, with a tobacco store. So, we would love for the moratorium to move on from now to present, so we would be able to sell more products. Cool? Thank you. Thank you for your guys' time. Sorry.
Any questions for the applicant?
I guess I'm just curious. You, you've, you've got this Cheapest Smokes. Do you have a, a shop somewhere that you're selling? In Gardena?
Yes, sir.
On Western?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Any others? Excuse me, if there's some more to question, then we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? You want to discuss, or no? I mean, I am a, I'm not going to say I'm an avid, you know, cigar smoker, but I am a cigar smoker, so, you know, if it's, if, you know, to sit there to say, you know, to, I'm not a cigarette smoker, to sit there to say, you know, to limit the number, the volume of what's they are to have, you know, that's kind of a, a business thing there because each cigar smoker is actually, what we say, keen to what particular brand that they're going to smoke. So, for me, I don't smoke any big-box brands, and any of that is, is all of, what would be house blends and stuff like that. So, that number wouldn't be, you know, something, you know, that means to go into a, a smoke shop. Mostly the time is me, you know, sitting in my backyard smoking something like that. So, that's just my, my take on that, so.
I used to smoke Paul Mall when I was smoking, but no longer, anyway.
I mean, from my understanding, this resolution is for new business, new store, not the existing one.
Correct. So, there's, I believe, sixteen existing significant tobacco retailers in Gardena as we speak today. They're licensed already. This would not, I guess, make them shut down. The applicant here is not one of those sixteen. So, to make it clear, he's, he's wanting to be a significant tobacco retailer shop allowed in Gardena. This would prohibit any new significant tobacco retailers, more than the sixteen that we already have. This ordinance also requires, well, defines hookah lounges and cigar lounges as not being significant tobacco retail-type shops, but would require a conditional use permit to establish. So, there's no prohibition on those. It's just establishing a process for hookah lounges or cigar lounges who want to be in Gardena would then have to go through the conditional use permit process if it's in one of the zones that Amanda had previously mentioned.
Question, question at this point. Are we, does the number sixteen, since that's the number that we have right now, significant? What if one of them decided to close? Does that open it up for, so, it's a diminishing, if, if, if someone go, if one of the sixteen go out of business, it's now fifteen, or fourteen, or thirteen is it? No one knew?
If one of the sixteen goes out of business and sells its business to another significant tobacco retailer at the same location, it essentially runs with the land as a legal non-conforming use.
Okay.
But, if it goes out of business and becomes a coffee shop, that doesn't open up a sixteenth slot somewhere else in the city.
Okay. Understand.
Okay, my question is, hookah lounge, so you would be having people come in to smoke as well, or just buy?
Come, come back to the podium, please.
With Cheapest Smokes as well. So, just to clarify, we would not want to open as a hookah lounge or as a cigar lounge. We will carry a variety of cigars within our smoke shop, but what we're looking for is the opportunity to be able to have the same market share that these existing sixteen tobacco shops already have. Because as of right now, I mean, we have been limited to exactly eighteen percent of our entire tobacco shop to only be tobacco, to, it puts us at a great disadvantage versus everybody else. And like my partner said, we are just trying to do business, to beautify the city. I mean, even on the side of our wall, what we did is, out of our own pocket, we created a mural just to start establishing somewhat of a, a focus point in the city to beautify the city, but we're just looking to be able to compete with everybody else and not be left out. And with that being said, I know that one of the primary concerns is the effect that it has on the youth in the city of Gardena. We've actually been visited by the California Department of Health, and they tried to pretty much do a sting operation and send in a minor to go ahead and try to purchase products from us, and we actually passed that test. And we just received a letter from the California State Department of Health on Thursday of last week. So, all of the points that we've implemented into our shop, we've been in this industry for over ten years. We're not, we're new business owners, but we're not new in this industry, and we understand everything that has to go into effect. And at the end of the day, a person that uses tobacco will not cease to use tobacco. What we're trying to provide is a mature establishment where they can go in and be able to purchase the products that they want, but they also won't have to worry that their children or grandchildren will be able to purchase these products as easily. That is what we're trying to provide as an establishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other question? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number PC seven-two-four recommending the city council adopt ordinance number one eight-seven-one to amend chapter five-point-five-two and title eighteen of the Gardena Municipal Code relating to significant tobacco retailers, cigar lounges, and hookah lounges, and making a finding for the ordinance and exempt, is exempt from CEQA pursuant to CEQA guidelines section one-five-eight B three.
Just to clarify, is that section one-five-oh-six-one subsection B three? Sorry, it's small text, so I apologize.
No problem. Thank you.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Vice Chair, Vice Chair Wright Scher.
Yes.
Commissioner Langley.
Yeah.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
And Chair Henderson.
No.
Motion passes four-one.
Okay, excuse me, moving on to item seven B, Zone Text Amendment, one dash twenty-four. PC resolution nine dash twenty, recommending that city council adopt ordinance eighteen-sixty-five amending the Garden Municipal Code. Chapters eighteen-point-six-zero, section five-point-zero-eight, dash one-seventy-eight, sixteen-zero-three-zero, A sixteen-zero-five-zero relating to temporary use permits, events to amending section five-zero-point, excuse me, five, five-point-zero-four-one-sixty, five-point-zero-four-two-sixty-eight relating to permits, finding that the ordinance category exempt from, from the positions of the California Miss, of CEQA guidelines fifteen-point-zero-six-one B, section three, and then fifteen-three-oh-four as minor alter to land.
Again, good evening, Chair Henderson and members of the commission. Under this item, the planning commission is being asked to make another consideration for ordinance number eighteen-sixty-five. If you recall, this item was brought before the commission on January sixteenth of this year, and that, that recommendation, that, the resolution for recommendation on the ordinance as prepared, as presented to the commission, was then brought to the city council on March twelfth. At that city council meeting, the, the council considered the drafted ordinance as the commission had recommended for approval, but a, as well at the meeting, considered a request, or a comment from the, the local YMCA located within the city on Artesia Boulevard in, in, in relation to walk-up food distribution events in conjunction with their local nonprofit organizations in the city. So, at that time, after that consideration, the city council directed staff to, to draft the ordinance to provide for specific provisions to allow for these types of events. So, with those significant changes within the ordinance, it has to be brought back to the commission, as this is a Zone Text Amendment, and so the planning commission, again, is being asked tonight to make a, a further recommendation for the, the amendments. And so, basically, the, the ordinance was brought back to you with highlighted sections of what, what was being changed. And again, it's in relation to walk-up food distributions. So, this was the table that was provided in the ordinance, and what's being added is for these events, that again, that would be in conjunction with the nonprofit, to be allowed in a similar way to a certified farmer's market. So, they would be allowed for two days a week. They need not be in consecutive orders, so they could do Mondays and Wednesdays, or, or they could do Thursday and Friday. But two days is the maximum during the week, but there would be no maximum allowed through, through the twelve-month period, as similar to, again, a certified farmer's market was drafted and under the ordinance. So, that, that's the change that's being presented to you tonight under this ordinance. So, again, staff is, is recommending, again, this is a public hearing matter, to open the public hearing, receive testimony from the public, and adopt new resolution PC nine-dash-twenty-four recommending that the city council adopt the ordinance with the suggested changes as presented tonight. presented tonight.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff?
Does this affect churches anyway? I didn't realize that it was affecting the YMCA. So now, does it affect other nonprofits the same way?
So being a church would be more than likely, it would be a nonprofit, so they would be allowed similarly to host events. So it's a walk-up event, so not a drive-through event, but a walk-up event that would be allowed, again, through this permitting process for any type of nonprofit.
I think you're referring to one, you know, there was one, I know you're aware of, where it created a long line in the street. So that was a drive-through event. So that does not apply here. This would have to be ones where people have the ability to park their vehicle, that they have adequate onsite parking, and then they would park their car, get out of their car, be able to physically be given the food items and then walk back to their vehicle and then leave. But it would not allow for drive-throughs through this process.
What I was thinking also was the Boy Scout event at JCI, which I think is in two weeks, and would that...
So that's their annual pancake breakfast. So we wouldn't consider that a food distribution event, but a special event that they apply for a permit and then they have adequate onsite parking plus regular public parking that happens. But there's no drive-through through there. They actually
Okay.
Sit down in the JCI and, well, I'm there every year, too.
Inside, but they also distribute outside, having been distributed to.
Yeah, they cook the pancakes on the grills, you walk through the line, they give you your Happy Flappies, and then you walk downstairs and sit down.
It's within the building.
But you can also take, you can also take it home.
Yeah, that's fine. So this, yeah, this ordinance will have to go back to the city council after, in the formal recommendation from the planning commission. So at that time, when it goes before them, after 30 days, it will be in effect.
Any other questions? Or do we have a motion? Well, we have to close the public hearing.
We didn't have any requests for public comments on this item.
Got you. Is there a motion? Discussion, I mean, or we're good?
I guess I am, I'm good. I just wonder if all the nonprofits, because I don't know what goes on in all the different nonprofits, I just know one or two have read this or know about this coming, just like the YMCA in that situation. But it can be amended, I mean, nothing's in concrete, that's the one thing. So if we start finding that it's not fitting right, we can relook at this at a later time. So therefore, I make a motion to accept resolution number PC 9-24 recommending the city council adopt ordinance number 1865, amending the Gardena Municipal Code, chapter 18.60 and section 5.08.170, comma, 8.16.030, comma, and 8.16.050 relating to temporary use permits and temporary event permits and amending section 5.04.160 and 5.04.278 relating to permits and finding the ordinance to be categorically exempt from the provision of the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to guidelines, whatever that thing is, 15061, comma, or parentheses B, parentheses 3, and whatever that is, 15304 as a minor alteration to land. Is that section? Okay.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wright Sher.
Yes.
Commissioner Sherman.
Yes.
Commissioner Khan.
Yes.
And Chair Henderson.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item number eight, we have community directors, development directors report.
Yes, good evening, Chair, new vice chair, Wright Sher. If you didn't know, you are being live broadcast tonight via YouTube and that will be a normal occurrence from this point forward, as long as we don't run into any technical difficulties. So just wanted to make you aware of that, that you're being live broadcast starting this evening and, I guess, in perpetuity. Also, if you didn't know, today, the Veterans Wall at Heels was driven through Gardena. It passed through right in front of City Hall about 12 o'clock this afternoon, en route to its destination, which is Arthur B. Johnson Park in the south. They'll be setting that up and then it will be available for viewing, I believe, starting April 4th. So there's a number of volunteers who are going to be establishing and putting that monument up so that anyone near and far can come and visit that. And it'll be open until April 7th, 24 hours a day that you can view this wall, so. Correct. April 4th through April 7th. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, we'll move to the planning environmental quality commissioners report.
Commissioner Langley has none.
Commissioner Sherman has no report.
No report.
No report, Augustine.
And I have no report, but for all you UCLA people, my daughter decided on Cal. And we are adjourned at 8:20.